Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So Heather, the appointment schedule, are we talking about the committees here?
If we start right at the top, the first one, first thing is usually my administrative report, which I figured I would forego since the only thing I've been working on the past two weeks has been licensing.
Okay, so we're gonna forego Heather's report. Select Board updates, any liaison report updates?
Working with the cable company on the cable company contract, designating buildings for drop points to transmit a signal as well as trying to get some free cable access for some of the town buildings. That's moving forward very nicely.
Good. Any comments on that? Jackie?
Nope, not right now.
And MPI committee is here anyways tonight, so they'll go over that information so I can pass on giving a report there. Report from departments, boards, and chairs. Okay, Tom Quinlan, I don't see Tom about the e-permitting software and cost. I know he's supposed to be here tonight, so we'll put that aside for now. Brief report from the public safety group. Anybody here from the public sa- well, Charlie, I guess that's actually disbanded at this point.
Well, there's two, there's two groups. There's the public safety group relative to the police fire and interaction with the highway department. Then there's the public safety building project. There's ongoing meetings between myself and the architect quietly about this, trying to figure out what's going on. We're right now exploring a federal grant. This is not a promise, this is exploring, or I call it fishing.
Anything that you want to report on, or is it just preliminary?
It's all very preliminary.
Okay. Historical commission?
Thank you. Just wanted to report that of course, over the course of the last year or so, we've spent an inordinate amount of time on the demolition delay process, which as you know passed at the last town meeting and is awaiting approval right now. One of the things looking at that future-wise is that we have not at all addressed how defense of that bylaw would be financed. The historical commission annual budget is around, I think it's $1,500 or so, and that just barely covers lights and electricity and stuff like that. So at some point in the future, should the opportunity come up where a demolition delay is enforced, we would need to have some sort of funds because it normally takes consultation with experts or it may take some money. So I, we have not addressed that, and I don't know how it will be addressed in the future. I don't know of anything imminent. There was an application taken out for demolition of 186 College Highway, but that application was prior to passing the demolition delay bylaw. That building is, the two parts of that building, 1791 and 18 oh something, but that will not come under the bylaw if it, if and when it does get approved. So at some point in the future, there will be a need for some money to investigate opportunities if someone does indeed approach and want to demolish a building that's covered under the bylaw.
Do you think you should build some into the next fiscal year's budget?
Yes, yeah. Even if it doesn't get used and how much that will be, I'll have to discuss it with, with the committee and see what we want to do to that. Frankly, I don't foresee that there's going to be any application during the course of the next year or so. I'm thinking more distant future than that, but yeah, maybe we should build some little bit into it and do so every year.
Would that only be needed if the owner wants to challenge it? If the owner is in agreement for a stay of a year, that wouldn't come into play, would it?
No, but part of the law, part of the law states that the, the historical commission will help in investigating possibilities for an alternative to demolition. So typically what happens there is you either have to engage some sort of architect or at maybe the bare minimum to engage PVPC or someone like that who has some expertise on, on alternatives, maybe alternatives of applying for grants for the- So there, there is a cost to that and how much it is. I mean, I could get a state average for it and try and find out that way, but frankly, I think a state average is going to be more than what will be necessary for Southampton. But there is going to be a need for some sort of money.
So you think during the next fiscal year that'll come up, or you're thinking several fiscal years away?
I'm thinking a couple of fiscal years away.
John?
Yes, sir.
I would have said differently had, had not the application been submitted prior to the approval.
For College Highway?
Yeah.
Have you explored community preservation relative to their historic funding?
Depend, uh, it will depend on, yes, but it will depend on individual properties and what is, you know, as they come up. If I wanted to tear my house down, are there historical, is there a historical nature to it? Yes, and would CPC have funds available for some sort of study? Yeah, probably. But I'm thinking there may be circumstances where that does not come into play and will need some sort of money to play with.
I, I understand that. I'm just concerned about having a tight budget and allocating money to sit in an account-
I know.
-for the what-if.
I know, I know. It's, it's a problem.
Or maybe we build, again, it's a couple fiscal years away, maybe we build something into the general legal fund.
That would probably be the way, yeah.
But we get to delay it at least one year.
Yeah, but we need to be thinking-
Sure.
-in that direction. The other thing that we're working on currently that is turning into more than we all expected, and that was the request to move the 1890 safe out of the old town hall into the new town hall for use by the town clerk. And we have some CPC money approved for that project, but it's turning out that the project is getting delayed because of structural problems. There may, there, there may be a need for some structural alterations in this building. I don't know what was holding it up in the old building. It weighs about 3,500 pounds. It's, it certainly has not gone through the floor over there yet, but so, so we're being held up there and the monies, the CPC monies that we had approved, if we need to engage engineering studies and a build out of the basement underneath this part of the building is not going to be enough. So we're, we're in the throes of trying to investigate that now. I've been in touch with a national expert about these sorts of things, and he's the one that gave me the actual weight of the safe. So that's taking up, again, a lot of our time, and that's, that is still a questionable project whether it'll ever get done. Other than that, for the future, we intend to take another look at scenic roads. I know there's been a lot of confusion about what we, what Southampton now has for scenic roads, and I did some studies there, and I think everybody is pretty much on the same page as to what we have. If you want to record it into your minutes here, I can tell you what they are. They're, and incidentally, these, these scenic roads have been approved in town meeting. That's where I got this information. There's East Street, Rattle Hill, Russellville, Cold Spring Road, Gun Road. Those were in 1974. In 1986, Maple was approved. In 1987, Manhand Road was approved, and in 2001, Mountain Road. So there's five, six, seven, eight right now.
So, which is a little different than what the clerk asked, because I believe she has Pleasant Street on there, is that right?
Yes, Pleasant Street.
But that's not-
Never, has never been approved, right.
Okay.
That's what I have. I don't know if you have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Okay, Housing Authority, is anybody here from the Housing Authority? Oh, yes. Welcome.
Thank you. Anne Darcy, 77 Russellville Road. I'm here on behalf of the Southampton Housing Authority. I drew the short straw. I understand you guys are just looking for an update of what we've been up to?
Right.
Is my understanding?
We only basically see about once a year, so just an update of what's been going on.
Okay, well, we are actively pursuing trying to get some affordable housing on the books for Southampton. Right now, I believe we have 44 units that is counted towards our 10%, and that's at Southampton Meadows, I believe is the name of it. They're state units, so beyond that, we have been working, we have monies from the community preservation, and you probably know the exact amount, and I should have it, but I don't. I apologize. It's like 200 and something thousand. It's, it's a decent size amount, but miniscule when you're talking about any kind of development. So what we've been doing is we've been researching land. We always look at the land that's for sale. I was asked to appeal to the board if you ever hear of land that becomes available to let us know so that we can take a look at it. We, we've checked out various parcels. We went on a walk through the one with the brick wall in front of it. That was just recently, yeah, no. And then we had some, you know, land that I loved out by the East Hampton line, but way out of our price range. And then Vijay, the members of the board are Vijay DeTala, Jenneke Reynolds, Lauren Bell, and Robert Dunnehue, and myself. So Vijay had been in talks with the Dodd people for some property there. What we did do is we took a little tour of the Parsons Village that was recently opened in East Hampton. I don't know if you're familiar with it. It's a lovely little property developed by HAP. It's, I forget how many units it is. It's, it's quite a few units. It's nice. It's affordable housing, one and two bedrooms. That would be the kind of thing that we're looking to do. We're in talks with HAP about perhaps a friendly 40B. For those of you who aren't familiar, what that is, is that is if you have less than 10% of affordable housing in your community. If a developer came in and wanted to develop, they could use Chapter 40B to bypass town regulations. It's not something typically you want to actually have happen. We want to have some control of our town, so that's why we're trying to look into a friendly 40B or to try and find some sort of affordable housing that will increase our numbers. So beyond touring the Parsons Village, and I encourage you guys all to take a drive-by, it's really nice. It's the kind of thing we would like. It would blend in with the scope of the community. It looks really nice. It's all like little individual houses, so it doesn't look like the projects or anything like that, which really wouldn't fit in with our, our landscape here. So we are in talks with HAP regarding development. I think two town meetings ago in May, we buy, we, the town passed inclusionary zoning. We've yet to enact any of that. We haven't had the opportunity. That depends on the developer, and I think they have to develop like 10 parcels in order for that to kick in. Hasn't happened yet, but if that happens, then it will kick in. So I think that that's everything I was supposed to cover. Do you guys have any questions?
I've got a general question. I don't know if anybody has the answer. If you're looking for land and we have land that we're taking for back taxes, can we take that land and use it for that purpose? Does anybody know? I mean, it's something we should look into.
I believe you can. I believe you, I know in, in Holyoke, they can, the city can sell it to the Housing Authority for a dollar.
That may be something we can, we can look into.
Yeah, and that would be helpful. Anything we can do to retain control so that we don't have growth that's, we're not-
And the cost will be a lot more reasonable than the open market, for sure.
That's correct.
So Heather says you should check into it.
Thank you, Heather. Any other questions?
Before we get to the 40B, in order to get, I guess, past 40B, how many units do we have to have in town that'll make that 10%?
Oh, gosh, I, I didn't count the number of units. I know it's 10%, and I know we only have 44. We have a long ways to go. I think we're at like maybe 1% if we're lucky.
Okay, so.
So we have a ways to go. So that could kick in. And, you know, that's what we're really trying to avoid. It's one thing if it's a friendly 40B that we're working in tandem with the developer, because we still can retain some control, but-
The apartments that we have behind East Hampton Savings Bank and that, they don't classify as low income?
Are they, oh, yeah, isn't that Southampton Meadows?
Those are the ones, aren't they?
That's the one that has the 44 units.
But then we have the senior center there too. Doesn't that classify?
Not to my knowledge. In fact, I understood we have no senior housing, because that's how I became involved with the Housing Authority. I have a passion for affordable senior housing, and that's a hard sell right now with DHCD, with low-income tax credits. They're just not funding senior housing, which is heartbreaking, because to me, in this community, you have people that downsize, they age out of their home. Not only do they have to give up the home that they may have lived in their whole life, but because there's no options, they have to give up the community that they're familiar with. So it, you know, it's heartbreaking to me.
Any other questions?
You got a question?
Oh. Hi, Tammy Walunas, 298. John, you brought up a, a point of land that we've taken over. There's a parcel on Brickyard Road just past the railroad tracks. That was a house that was demolished. There's a big barn there, and a lot of the land was sold off to Dave Garska, one of the builders. Has that land been fully sold off, or is that something that we, the town should be looking at?
Can I add?
Because that's kind of still nearby, but-
Only because I was indirectly involved in the court side of that, it's my memory, and I could be wrong, but it's my memory, that the way that worked out, there was a debt owed to the town, and to pay that debt, the backlands were given to the Conservation Commission as conservation land. The area by the barn where the actual house exists is still owned by the original owner.
So the owner sold it to Dave Garska, probably?
No, the other parts, those other parcels were taken out because it went into receivership, and the court awarded the receiver compensation. The compensation was to sell those lots to pay for the expenses the receiver went through. So basically what it left was, is the receiver auctioned off or, or sold those lots to pay off the bills that were attached. They took the land that was in the back by the river and gave that to the town for conservation land so that they could take and offset the expenses that the town incurred. And they left, I don't know, one or two building lots where the old barn was and the old house to the original owner, so he still had a piece of property in town. He can do a perk test and build there if he wanted to.
So the land is still privately owned, though, the rest of it?
Yeah, it's not owned by the town. The only thing the town actually owns is the backland by the river, which is not something you're going to build on anyways. And, you know, and the other lots, because of the receivership, you know, we're doing very similar with the same thing on Gun Road right now with a cleanup operation. Now, you'll see the receiver basically auction that property off to pay the debts that were incurred. But the town, through receivership, doesn't end up owning anything.
But going forward, we should look at that, thank you, as an option, yeah.
But Charlie Two just entered the room, so if you want to ask Charlie Two, he's, he's probably primed and ready and can articulate far better than I.
Unless, unless you want to turn around and walk out quickly.
The Brickyard Road, 179, the old barn that was there, the house that was torn down, Conservation took the land in the back by the river. Yeah, and that was for compensation for expenses to the town. Yeah, but the front lots either went through the receivership to Dave Garska for a compensation for their expenses, and it left one or two lots by the old barn to the original owner. So the town does not own any of that.
It wasn't, it wasn't on the microphone, but that was confirmed.
He keeps nodding yes.
Any other, any other questions on this? Okay.
T. Chambers walking in late.
Master Plan Implementation Committee.
Hank Barton, 51 Pomroy Meadow Road, reporting for the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Obviously, from what you're hearing tonight, other boards are extremely active, conservation, planning, historical, housing, and park. The Implementation Committee has also heard, or has been trying to hear from other entities in town that are not formerly members of the committee, so we have recently heard from Energy, the Water Commissioner, and the Board of Health. And we found, I think, my observation has been that one of the happy outcomes of the committee's existence is there's a lot of exchange of ideas and information during the meeting, because sometimes people who would otherwise never get together, get together and swap ideas. In terms of the committee itself, we're having some structural problems or meeting problems getting a quorum. Part of that is because the park rep, Mark Reed, often has to either leave early to be here for the planning board, because he's got business with them, or go some, not be able to be there at all and go someplace else because he has business in another town. So I'm trying to get Mark to substitute a member of his committee to the Implementation Committee, just so that we have somebody coming in and keeping us up to date. The same is, is true of housing. Vijay has told me that a lot of his responsibility now has been removed from Springfield to Boston, so he's finding it extremely difficult to come to the meetings. And she left, I guess. I've approached one other member myself with Vijay's permission. Haven't heard back from her, but I think if we can get those two committees more regularly represented, we won't have a quorum problem. Obviously, they're busy and doing things. The two committees that are defunct, the Select Board might look into reviving. The Energy Committee, for one. Kurt Bojole came in and gave us a report about the activities of that committee several years ago when they were looking into ways to conserve energy, make more efficient use of it for the town. The committee, as I said, I think is defunct. I don't know if it would have, whether it would be useful in the town's efforts to become a green community or not. I don't know how that proceeds and what's necessary for that, but they might be. The other is the Agricultural Commission, and in the master plan, there are several responsibilities assigned to them, including looking into a farmer's market, looking into agricultural tourism, et cetera. I don't know if that committee or commission ever met, frankly, and I'm sure the terms of the original members have all expired. But the Select Board might look into trying to revive that. And of course, I realize and have long realized, since I was a member of the planning board in a housing authority, the difficulty of recruiting volunteers. And I really don't know what the answer to that is, other than to approach people and ask them one-on-one directly. You usually get a no, but sometimes you get a yes. So I think, if I could say one more thing about the constituency of the committee, I probably will leave the committee this summer at our last meeting. We have another member who, who has volunteered to leave the committee because he has other reasons to be absent frequently, a citizen-at-large. So it's probably going to be necessary to recruit two or three new members. And since I have been associated with the master plan since 2009 as committee, as chair of the original committee and as chair of the Implementation Committee, I would hate to see the Implementation Committee die because I made a personal resolution that unlike the community development plan of 15 years ago, I don't know if anybody here remembers that, which we worked out with the assistance of PVPC, it was kind of a mini master plan. It just went on the shelf and stayed there. And one of my goals was to make sure that didn't happen with the master plan. So having said that, if anybody's got any ideas about membership, citizen-at-large membership, partly to make it easier for people to come to meetings, we've gone to every other month. The reason we did that was that we found that within one month, not a lot happens. You know, people would come back and, well, we're doing the same thing we were doing last month, so we decided to go on a two-month interval. That's helped a little bit, but I think we still have to find a way to get more consistent attendance.
Well, you know, if I can comment, since I go to the meeting, I mean, it's, it's, every other month, I find it very interesting to hear the committees on what's going on. It's, it's one of the few places you can go and get kind of a, a group session there. It only lasts for about an hour or so. It doesn't take a whole lot of time. So if anybody out there is interested, I think they should give Hank a call and, but it's, it's the only place I can think of to go and hear about so much.
Right. I, I think, in, in the case of Vijay and Mark, it's a matter of their other responsibilities, but-
Life gets in the way, so you gotta change.
One of the citizens-at-large and myself probably should, somebody should be taking our places, as it were. Hopefully, somebody who would, might be willing to serve as chair.
Any questions?
Yeah, Hank, just so you know, Heather sent out letters to all the farmers that we're aware of about two weeks ago asking if there was an interest in getting the Agricultural Committee going and so on and so forth. Never did hear anything back on that.
We heard back from one person who might be interested. So we'll pick it up again the first of the year and try to do some, we'll pick it up again the first of the year and try to see if we can get some more people interested and involved. But when we sent out the letter, as we talked about before we sent it out, Hank, we did include a bunch of the ideas in the master plan to try to get people interested and say, hey, you know, this would really help. So we'll see what we get.
Yeah, I think, I think there's, if you think about it, you know, we have two or three orchards in town, a couple of dairy farms, two or three or four, who knows how many horse farms. We still, I think, have a dairy farm. Well, we do have a dairy farm, Fletcher's, and I don't know if Cyril's is still in the dairy business or not. I guess not. We have a vineyard. So there are about four or five different forms of agriculture represented in the town. We have kids in the elementary school, many of whom have never seen a cow or a horse close up and have no idea where apples come from. So I hope that that can be pursued.
Don't they come from the Big Y?
Well, sure, of course.
But I mean, most kids probably think that's where they come from. You're right.
Right, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. And Cemetery Commission? Hi.
Hi, I'm Robert Floyd, 15 East Street. The Cemetery Commission is, and it contains three members. Judith Miller Collin is her chair. She can't be here this evening, so I'm speaking on Harvey, on her behalf. I'm the superintendent of our three cemeteries, and Chris Bowen is her secretary. We have three cemeteries, the central one that everyone knows about on College Highway, and we have the West Part Cemetery, which is down on Former Road near the reservoir. And was it last year? Yeah. We had the Boy Scout, an Eagle Scout project from East Hampton. He, Mr. Curran, he brought in 25 people and machinery and took all the weeds and all the trash and all the dead logs and removed it. It looked like you could use it to putt. It was manicured well. And we don't have any burials there now. We have one outstanding deed. I've spoken to the party last week. They have the right to be buried there, but no machinery, because they would dig up the old stones and you really couldn't get a, get a, get a truck in. Oh, and then the third one is across from the convenience store down past Connet Park. It's across the street on College Highway. We have a right-of-way there. Nobody really visits it, but we do have an easement, a right-of-way, if anybody, it's open to the public. open to the public, if anybody wants to visit. And, I'd be guessing 17 stones, maybe, I'm not sure. We have several projects. The Cemetery Commission is incredibly, at least for me, difficult to really get a handle on through all the years. Lot of complexities. One of them is the wrought iron fence. It's decaying, and all the road salt on College Highway is deteriorating it. We can't bring somebody in to sandblast it because of the lead paint. It has to be removed. And, we found three companies willing to bid on restoring it, and we're preparing something for CPA funding, but we're doing a lot more homework than we tried several years ago. We're wanting to take these sides and bring them in across where College Highway is, and then work on those that exist now. And there are supports that support the fence, and those supports go into the ground. They have their own concrete base. Can't get somebody to bid on restoring them and remove, so it's, it's, it's a tedious project. So, we're working on it. We're near completing our next presentation for CPA funding. There's stone restoration. It's 15,000 for maybe 11 or 12 stones. We do that every now and then. Now and then, a tree branch will fall down, or somebody may back into it, and that adds to the list, so that's, that's ongoing. But we are mapping the back of the cemetery. We have a section that we've been selling plots in, we call it Section 11. It's way in the back on the right. And that whole back area, parallel to Route 10, College Highway, is fertile ground for a new section. So, we want to have that all mapped out. May have to remove some old dead trees, but it's something we're working on. We also have that back property, and we said at the beginning, we wanted to preserve the aquifer. We wanted to, it's conservation land, and we would like paths, we would like the ability for somebody to walk and to sit down on a bench, and maybe have three green burials nearby, and not really slash and burn or make a plateau, nothing wrong with that, but we wanted something different. I recently attended a New England Cemetery Association Conference, and really got schooled on green burials and how we can get more involvement with the community, so we're working on that also. We have cows every now and then, maybe once a year, they get loose down the road. I inspected the gate. A squirrel could, could open that gate. But anyway, it has been no problem since, and so the cows are where they need to be, and everything is fine. We're looking into software right now. It's all labor, so when somebody buys a plot, we meet them there and hang out with the family, really get to know them, it's quite personal. And Grandma's there, sometimes Grandad, and then we have to write it all by hand, and we have to go to the master map and write that by hand, because we don't want any surprises when they finally get down to burying someone. So, we want to look into getting that computerized, and there's software out there, but it, it seems quite expensive, so we're, we're looking to modernize for the future, because maybe there won't be as many dedicated people as there historically has been. We, we've approved, and with the Select Board approval, we have the Friends of the Southampton Cemeteries. We haven't done anything with it, because we have to do something for taxes, but essentially, mimicking the Friends of the Edwards Public Library, where they will put on a cake sale, they will put on a book sale, and then the funds that they receive, as I have this, my memory in my head, they gift the library. So, if we were to sell something, it would go basically into the general fund. So, the Friends of the Southampton Cemeteries will get involved in candlelight lantern walks, Halloween walks, you know, those midnight tours, full moon tours, and something where the community, it's a great old cemetery. I love it. Took me a while, but you get to know certain stones and the person's name, and not that you're friends with them, but it's something reassuring of, of seeing that, that, those stones there. What we need, we spent a lot of time and effort meeting with the town accountant, the town treasurer, or administrator, Finance Committee, to explain how we're behind the eight ball for mowing, and we didn't receive funding for mowing. And, we have certain funds for the cemetery, but they can only be used for stone repair or perpetual care, or something we may not know, but the old stones, 1700s, 1800s, early 1900s, there's no perpetual care. So, there's no money set aside for perpetual care. So, somehow the cemetery has to dig in deep in the pockets. So, what we've recommended is that the Select Board consider putting one light item for mowing for all the town lands. We run the cemetery, the town owns the cemeteries, the town owns the parks. And the way it used to be, until Randall changed it, but if a mower broke down on a summer day, August 10th, then the Cemetery Commission was charged with that repair. If it broke down in the Parks Department, then the Parks Department was charged with that repair, and that doesn't seem to be fair. So, we really plead that it be looked at and be considered, or at least we, we get the $10,000 or whatever it is to fully fund mowing. We receive a lot of complaints, because we've let the grass grow high and high, trying to spread the available funds out, and people have brought in mowers. That's not good. They take them out of the car, they could get injured, we have liability, they could hit a stone, and they're not happy campers.
Well, we've talked to Randall about taking all of that, putting it just in one budget under his budget, so we don't have to reallocate it, so...
That'd be great.
Yeah, same with the parks, and...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Thank you. Questions?
Questions?
I have a question.
Yep.
How is the Soldier's Monument holding up?
How's the what?
Soldier's Monument.
I've heard reports that it may need some work. I've heard reports that, you know, there's a hollow spot. I haven't found it knocking around. I was there when they refurbished it. I took a lot of photographs, it could be a great flip chart of a movie, but, but I don't have that technical expertise to answer that, but I have heard feedback that it needs some work, and there is some more funding. And with that, at least, it's a community-driven effort, and people come in and donate, and you yourself have received funds from banks for that years ago. So, that, we believe, whatever work would be needed, that would come separately.
I know that we, we, the school's involved for essays, and so it was a learning experience. It wasn't just to preserve the monument.
Right.
It was actually, you know, about our veterans.
Yes.
And so, maybe with the stones, and I've heard of people rubbing, doing rubbings on the stones. Maybe that somebody could do something with the school and get involved with, maybe helping with preservation of the stones, and if the monument needs anything. I was always nervous about the bird on the top. I know he's missing a wing.
Civil War monument, yeah, the...
But...
The eagle, or the dove, or the pigeon, however people think.
Right, yeah, heading on, what do you want to go?
And Memorial Day, I'm there pretty much every year, and it's something to see those schoolkids run out and they put their little plant in front of veterans' graves, and then they stop and look at the stones. They don't run back, and so there's, there's that involvement, that's, that's quite nice. But yeah, the rubbings, getting, getting kids involved would be fun.
You're talking about the obelisk, the beginning of the cemetery, the Civil War grant...
John, you might want to get him at the microphone. Yeah.
By beyond the gravestone, to the Soldier's Monument, and part of it was the hollow, the hollow part of it.
Bob, I hate to ask you, but can you come up to the microphone?
The pigeon? Did you say pigeon? I'm sure it's an eagle.
Go back to what I was saying. The, beyond the gravestone, did some restoration to that with the, the matching state grant and the CPA grant for Civil War monuments, and they did do some shoring up of the hollow spots there. The reason why the bird, the eagle on top was not done is because nobody knows where the wing is.
Right, to find the wing, that's exactly right.
And, they were not prepared to build a new wing up there, so...
Do you have any idea where that is?
No.
No, because they were afraid if they touched it, then the whole thing would disintegrate and they'd lose the bird, yeah.
Thank you, Bob, it's pretty precarious.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna jump back now, Tom Quinlan's here, so he's going to give a report on e-permitting software and cost for implementation. Hi, Tom.
How you doing?
Good, you?
Hello.
I'm gonna ask a quick question as a follow-up. I guess Bob was bringing up 125 College Highway, that has a demolition permit, they're gonna demolish the whole thing, is that the idea?
They have a permit, they haven't decided whether they're going to actually demolish it or, you know, build off of it. Nothing says, don't have.
I see it's officially sold on the sign.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
But you have a, they have a permit.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm here to present the e-permitting that my assistant, Art Lawrence, has done a lot of research, has looked into, unfortunately, the state doesn't have a, or the country doesn't have a set one, body, any community, any area goes by the same one, so he's researched a good half a dozen plus. And, this one, from what he's come up with, and I researched along with him, he does the best. You know, a lot of the, when I worked at Greenfield, they had a company called Geo, which is, you know, been around longer and all, they've actually gone out of business and were bought out, and they had to redo and buy from the company who bought them out. So, you're talking, you know, tens of thousands for these other companies. And I know East Hampton actually just purchased a whole other, one which is tens of thousands. So, this one is out of East Palm Meadow. The first three pages are actually a little write-up from Point Software. And, you know, explains a little bit about them.
This is tied into Point Software, Permit Link?
That's right.
Permit Link is tied into Point Software, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Can you kind of walk us through how it would work?
Sure, well, kind of a little write-up adding, so when we did the overview last month, it was, our permits have gone up, I'll do a little update, permits have slowed down a little bit, whether it be the holidays, or the time of year, the weather, but give you an update on the amount of building permits, we're at 359 now, as of last week. So, they have, as far as coming in, slowed up, but we are still up well over 100 from previous years, as far as that goes.
And this is calendar year, right?
Yes, yes. What we would do with this, the software would be available online for people to go on, fill out, you know, and actually email it, you know, to the building department, we'd get it instantly. Disadvantaged, they'd still have to send a check or come in personally to pay for it, cash or check.
Wouldn't take credit cards?
We don't do any of that yet, it's something we could look into in the future.
Does this system allow credit cards? Okay.
Yep. You know, so it, it eases it for the, for the contractors, the homeowner, everybody as far as the, you know, applying to the permit. Things like if the contractor fills it out, and he does 10 a year, say, when he goes back on the site, it's all, all this information's gonna be in there, as well as for us, it's all in our, our database, and they just have to change the address, the scope of work, and, and, you know, the different projects in it. And as well as, like I said, we have all the information in the Orphans Comp, and all, and they can have that sent directly to the site, all updated for us. And, the biggest thing, you know, as far as when it starts out in, in the building department, would be to have a tablet, which I was thinking we had to purchase, but like, there's no one available right now that we could link with it. And when I go out, I know per project, you know, per address, building permit, however I want to look it up, it's gonna say what I, what the people were missing prior inspection. There's nothing that can be missed, I can punch up, you know, such and such an address, and, you know, that's a great benefit, because things can get, you know, missed, three months down the road, you go back to your logs and that. And, simple things, if you drive them by and they don't have their card on the window, and they have a permit, hold over, you look it up, and you don't have to bother the homeowner, you know, the contractor, anybody there, you know, whether the permit's there, what they're doing, what they're supposed to be doing. So, the tablet is the biggest advantage, as far as permitting, having that out in the field.
Now, if they did this online, would you mail them a permit, or would they print it off?
We could, that, that's the big savings for the, for the town, as far as we can email them, and they would have to, you know, they have to print it.
Okay. I mean, everybody's gotta have a, everybody's gotta have a computer and printer, but if they don't, they could still walk into Town Hall and get it?
Correct, you still have to have available always, you know, to do it in person.
Okay.
The, and that works as far as sending the permit, as well as I will send a letter of completion for each job that, you know, they do call for, for a, for a final, which this will make it easier as well to close all these permits, and help the people as far as giving them a letter of completion, because they, I can look up easy, you know, such and such, you know, should have been closed at this point.
Right.
A lot of roofers won't, you know, they finish the job, they get their check and they leave, and they wouldn't, you know, call to have the letter of completion. You know, I'm just, as an example.
Now, you, you're saying it's gonna cost about $4,000 a year to own the software. Is there an annual maintenance agreement on that after that, or is it a one-time buy?
It's a one-time for this year. It's, what they normally do is this $10 per permit, and I've met with Jim and Tom, the electrical and plumbing inspector, and talked it over, and at this time, there'd be too many disadvantages to present this with an added cost to our permit fees. I don't think you have a lot more people that aren't gonna pull the permits, you know, than right now, you know, they're adjusted, it's been almost a year, but it hasn't quite been a year since it's all been, you know, the, the increase in the fees, and they're gonna say, geez, another $5, $10, whatever it be, I'm gonna gamble on, you know, not pulling the permit. So, that was, that was one thing that we, we decided, presenting it, you know, it's too soon to go up on the fees.
So, let me ask you a question, because where I work, we, we implemented a, an e-procurement system where the vendor pays the fee. But this right here, so for instance, if I'm sitting at home, I need a permit, and I say, okay, if I go onto my computer and I do it, I know it's gonna cost me $10 extra, or I could walk down to Town Hall and not pay anything. So, as an option, me sitting at home would say, I'm gonna sit here and do it, because I'm a little bit lazy, it's worth the $10, where, you know, Jackie may say, no, I don't want to spend $10, and she's, so why wouldn't we offer, say, as an option, to try to recoup some of it?
Well, the minimum to get this is $4,000.
Well, I mean, we...
Basically, on the amount of, you know, permits, so instead of starting as adding the $10 per permit, you know, that's, that's, you know, I could discuss, I see what you're saying, it's that way, but I, I don't think we would get the 400 total that would go for that.
I guess I'm looking at, what if we don't get the funding in your budget? Do you want to just drop the whole thing, or would it be better to have option two?
I mean, option two, if the building right now, I guess, you know, maybe propose $5, and $10 would be a big increase after what we, you know, did after so many years. I know it's...
It's only for the people who want it. You know, I mean, that's my opinion, I don't know what, what you folks think.
Well, one, I agree with Tom, we should have this, okay?
I agree with that part.
Okay, that, that's not the issue. The issue is how we're paying for it.
Correct.
I'm also looking at the fact that we just increased the fees on everything. So, that said, and we've basically brought in more revenue based on the amount of permits he's issued, I would encourage that this gets submitted to the special town meeting in January to be funded, so that he can initiate this in February, March, and run with it, and not look at getting an additional fee on it at this point.
Okay.
I think it's gonna encourage more people to take advantage of it, and the other part to this is, he has a volunteer that helps him in his office. We don't pay for another staff person. I would much rather make the clerical support in that room less strenuous by electronic version.
Sounds good to me.
I mean...
Yeah, I, I concur, yeah. I also, if we raise the fees again, some people will not pull permits, and people will get hurt.
Okay, so...
So, does that sound like a strategy?
Submitting it to the town meeting, see if they could approve at the town meeting.
That would be great, yes.
Okay. So, again, the other cost, I don't know if I got, I asked the question right, but $4,000 to own it, what happens in year two, three, four?
That would be per year.
That's per year?
Per year, and I mean, Art couldn't make it tonight, he's, he could... And I mean, Art couldn't make it tonight, he's, he could give you the exact answers, and also Scott, the salesperson, could come as well, if that helped to, you know, give them more information on that, is, we just thought as presenting as, you know, the $10 a fee, you know, who knows what it would cost, I mean, we could do, if we increase the 100 this year, what if we increase next year and all, it could cost somewhere. They're, Art and I felt they're giving us a very good deal at the four, and talking to the communities, you know, not that you'd ever want to walk away or anything from that, they're like, wow, we're paying, you know, I don't want to say of what they, you know, 40, 50,000 these other communities for their programs, and it's a signed contract for years.
Yep.
And they're willing to work, and they want to, you know, take in the small communities and all, and they're hoping eventually to get the other departments, and, you know, all into it, and everybody work together.
So it wouldn't be a one-time cost, it would be addition to the base budget?
Right, and the reason I'm pointing at special town meeting is to get this up and running, because if he doesn't get it up and running through the special town meeting, even if it's allocated in May, he can't get it up and running until August, by the time it actually happens.
So we-
So we're going to lose the spring construction season.
So you'd have to bring it to the town meeting, but also have to build it into the budget for next year?
Okay.
Make sure that's in there.
John, just on one thing, I know Tom had mentioned this the last time he had presented this idea, but one of the benefits of this e-permitting software is it's not just exclusive to the building department. It actually allows other people, the assessors, to sign off on it, the fire chief to sign off on it, and over time, we can expand it even further, whether it's be their own permits or simply at this point, when he does a major building permit, has to get certification or sign-offs, or the plumbing or gas or electrical inspector need to sign off, they have it right in front of them. They can access it on any computer. What the $4,000 does, if I'm not mistaken, is it gives us four user accounts, four independent user accounts, which means that four different people can sign off.
So is it an electronic signature process where you can pass it along to-
Yeah, it's essentially, so if, if I am over in the assessor's office and Tom, you know, sends it over, and I have to go check it out for the final, when I'm done, I sign off with my initials, I check the box, whatever I need to do, he gets an alert instantly in his email that says, good to roll.
Do you know what the signature process is behind it? I mean, I know I'm very familiar with EchoSign, which is fantastic, so if that's included in there, that's even better.
Okay.
Yeah.
Who's Echo?
EchoSign, yeah. EchoSign and DocuSign are the two main ones, but EchoSign's an Adobe product, and a license is like $204 a year, but well worth it.
So, just to clarify with the board, so is it my understanding that I'm going to be working on submitting an article for special town meeting to the effect of $4,000 transferred for the purchase of this item?
Well, let me ask, you have to pay for it on an annual basis, right? So if this starts in February, it'll go to the following February, rather than just this budget year? Okay, so, and then for next year's budget, you can put a smaller amount to get you from February to the following June, then the year after you have a full amount.
The other option is too, like we're doing with Code Red, is we can actually, I don't think they'd have any problem saying, let's bill us from, you know, February to June, prorate the bill, and then do July to the following July and start getting on the fiscal. I'm sure we can work with them.
Yeah, that's just the paperwork.
There was things, we all sat, you know, one of the last meetings we had with him, and, you know, ideas that I brought that I had, Greenfield is, you know, and there's a whole system, and great, we can, you know, we'll add that in, and it's been very easy to work with as far as, you know, we'll get that, get that on the application.
So just to make sure I understood, so can the fire department use it for, I don't know, burning permits, or electrical, so other departments can use it?
Yes.
Okay. Can't go wrong.
Right.
Anything-
You know, eventually, the hope is everybody could have the tablet.
Yep.
You know, it's, I mean, just the pedestal of inspection, to be able to take the pictures, because what's to say when you walk out the door that things didn't get moved, you know, heaven forbid something happened to it, you know, and you're signed off on it, and, you know, the pipes change, you take the picture, you know, it's all written on that permit number and all, it's-
So do you have a tablet now?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a tablet now?
I surrendered a tablet, so he-
Yes, yes.
I was going to say, I have two, one personal and one for the town, I'd be glad to give a town one up, and I'll just put this on my personal, so there's another one.
I, we have plenty over in my office. When they were originally ordered, there was one for myself and my assistant.
Yeah.
My assistant doesn't use the iPad, and I very seldom even need it.
But your former assistant seems to be migrating into different departments.
Well, not that assistant, wrong one.
No, I was just, yeah.
Well, that's why Thea gets sick of work, having the hours it puts in, volunteers-
He's a great guy.
... and he enjoys it, I believe he enjoys it.
Yeah.
He had a basement review, that boy, it's a-
He's a great asset.
So, excuse me, Tom, does this software generate a lot of reports that are helpful to you?
Yeah, that's, everything will be set up, I mean, it's-
Right.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, I went on again, you go to a couple different spots on the computer to find out, and when we get the money that we brought in, you know, we can't even get it accurate, because it's, you know, first, three months, or whatever, so we're trying to add it all up, whereas this is going to have all that, you know, for us right there, you know, punch up rate date, so my permits, money, you know, and-
So now, there's not going to be any credit card information on this software at this point, right?
Not, not at this point.
Okay, because there's something, PCI compliance with the banking industry that we got to make sure we comply with if we take credit cards.
And I know, I want to keep referring, but like, East Hampton, their new program, they didn't go with that. It's still check or cash, with some, with PECO, it's something that they didn't want to work out as of yet, so they, even though they have one of the very expensive ones, they still don't do the online payments. So they're waiting on that, you know, for some reason.
Yeah, that's probably why. That's a great idea, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions, Tom?
Okay.
Okay, we're at, it looks like open time for the public. Anybody here from the public that wants to get up to the microphone? You do, please. Say your name and where you live, and-
Lucy Dotlin, I live at Ten Strong Road in this town. I have a question about the police chief's position. The job description says that he will be reporting to the town administrator-
Okay.
-and the select board. Was that a position change in the job description, and when did the change come about?
Can I answer?
And was it changed by the PPP board, and was that approved by the select board?
Okay, you want to answer?
Well, the first answer is, there was no change because there was no job description originally.
There was no job description?
No, neither was there a contract with the past police chief.
So, was this job description just written up recently?
Yes.
Okay.
And it was passed through the PQB.
So what happens if the town administrator leaves? Was, and-
It defaults back to the selectmen.
Yeah, and it's a working relationship-
Okay.
Because the select board obviously is all volunteers, and we're not here on a regular daily basis, so that synergies is important.
Okay.
John, the other thing too is, if I'm on the right page here, I believe the job description says, reports through the town administrator to the board of selectmen, so it just makes sense, should for some reason this position ever be vacant, the through, just currently for the time being, is it-
No, it says directly to the town administrator, I believe, it doesn't say-
It says through the town administrator to the board of selectmen, I believe.
I thought it said directly to the town administrator, and then reports to the select board. I'm just wondering if you left, this person that's coming in to replace you, is meeting this police chief for the first time, and, you know, doesn't have an experience with our town, so this police chief is going to have to report to him, but you just answered my question and said it will default back to the select-
Ultimately, everything falls back to the selectmen.
Okay.
The good and the bad, it still falls back at us.
Yeah, and at the time, if we get a new town administrator, which we're not expecting to do soon, we would work with that person to make sure, and if it wasn't a good match, we could temporarily change that.
That's a, okay.
Thanks for the question.
That's it, you answered, thank you.
Anybody else? No? Okay. Uh, let me see what time it is. Now, Tom Bard's supposed to be here, eight o'clock, is that?
Yes, so-
Okay, so we're going to pass up 4A for now, Tom Bard, talking about the solar project. Uh, B, 4B, review indirect cost calculations by the accountant using the town's traditional approach and the Haddley approach. Vicki has asked that, we delayed that, so she can have additional time to calculate the cost, so we're just going to table that for now. Will the town hall be closed on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve? Has the PQB submitted its, submitted its first draft? Yes, they have. So let me just read this here. PQB version doesn't permit observance and payment of a regular holiday on the day before if employee does not, is not regularly scheduled to work. So that means the town hall employees will not get Thursday, December 4th, and the 31st off. Any update on that? I'm not clear on that.
So, I think you left our sentences to on me here, John.
I was reading to myself.
But, so essentially what hap- they weren't listening, though, everyone else. So this item has been on the agenda before to the board of selectmen. At the time it came out previously, the board had asked to table the item until such time that the Triple PB had submitted their draft of the personnel bylaws to see what their recommendation was, because they didn't, the board of selectmen didn't want to do something that was different than what had been submitted. My understanding is past practice, and this is hearsay, because this was a while since this has happened previously, but if the holiday falls on a Friday, and since town hall has traditionally been closed on Fridays, that the folks would observe the holiday and get paid for it on Thursday. The Triple PB rules generally say something along the lines of, they follow the state holidays and how the state observes them. So if the holiday's on a Saturday, you work on Friday, you get paid on Friday. If you only work on Thursday and the holiday's on Friday, you don't normally work on the holiday, therefore you don't get paid for it.
Right.
It's totally up to the board of selectmen, the employees are very kind of anxious, because they need to know what they're doing and they need to plan their weeks, and we're only a week away at this point.
So the question is, do we pay the staff for a day that they don't normally work? Does anybody want to weigh in on that?
If they don't normally work, why are we being, okay?
Jackie?
Can you state, do the state rules again? Can you say them again?
The state rules?
Yes.
So essentially, my understanding of it is that if you work on Friday normally, and the holiday's on Saturday, you observe it on Friday.
Right.
But if the holiday, if you only work on Thursday, you don't work on Friday, and the holiday's on Friday, you don't get it.
And that's, and I work for the state, and that's accurate, so if somebody works Monday through Thursday, and Christmas, like next year will be on Saturday, you get Friday off, so if you don't work on Friday, you know, don't get it.
Yeah.
But you're still paid for the holiday.
Right. Well, no.
No, because you don't get it off.
Because it's not a, it's not a holiday that falls on a workday.
Yeah. Yeah. But the PQB is, put it in their revisions that we're looking at, we have the first draft, so I'm not sure how it's going to come out for next year. So I need a motion on how we want to do this, so one of you folks is going to have to make a motion.
All right, I move that we do not compensate employees when they are not scheduled to work.
Would you like to make a second?
No.
So, okay, so I'll second it for conversation, and a little more conversation. So, what would you propose other than this, and Jackie, if you're not in agreement?
Well, I mean, I think they should get paid for a holiday. If, you know, most people do, why would we not?
My argument is, is if they're not working, why are we compensating them? It's like giving them a bonus day.
Right, for the hours they hardly get anyways, we're only open Monday through Friday, and they're not getting-
Monday through Thursday.
I mean, pardon, Monday through Thursday, and I would think once a year, twice a year, we should, you know, give them some kind of bonus and appreciation.
But then we get into Thanksgiving, Fourth of July.
No, I'm talking about Christmas, I'm just talking about Christmas, and I just think it would be a good thing to do.
Yeah, Thanksgiving's on a Thursday, so that kind of takes that.
Okay, I'm just saying, though, there are other holidays out there.
And with Christmas and New Year's, it's only going to happen X amount of days, because it, Christmas and New Year's change every year.
Tammy Valunas, 298 College Highway. So, for Thanksgiving-
Are you recognizing people from the public?
For Thanksgiving, it was a Thursday-
Hold on, we're in the middle of a vote here, sorry.
I mean, if the state's basically protocols what we're following-
Some parts of the state, I don't want to say all the state, because there's union contracts that you have to abide by.
Agreed, no, but we're not dealing with the union contracts with this.
Do we know, Heather, what the majority of the other folks get, I mean, the school and the folks that have contracts?
Well, the school works five days a week.
Okay, so that wouldn't-
So they're going to get paid for the holiday.
Is there any other type of job that works four days a week we can draw from, or this is the only one, so?
Well, John, you're at a situation here, you have me at one end of the spectrum, Jackie at the other end of the spectrum, and you got a-
Yes, I do. The way I'm thinking of it right here is the PQB is redrafting the regulations, so this time next year, we're going to have some new regulations, so I think I'm going to say happy holidays and go with that side of the table. So, we'll take a vote, all in favor? You made the motion, I second it for conversation, so all in favor of passing this where they don't get paid? Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, okay. Motion fails. Would you like to make your motion?
I move that the employees at the town hall get paid on a Friday, even if they're not here for the holiday for Christmas.
Could-
Now, is that paid on Friday, or is that Thursday off?
Yeah, we're talking Thursday off.
Right, so, but paid for the holiday, even that, they're working one, Monday through Thursday, but if the holiday is on Friday, they should be paid.
Would you mind if I asked you if you could make that motion for this year?
For this year.
Okay.
For 2015.
Okay, I'll second that.
So, I, I'm sorry, I just-
The motion is-
I feel like the motion is a little vague, so are you, I think what you're trying to go for, Jackie, correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like you're trying to make a motion to approve that the employees in 2016, as pertains to Christmas and New Year's, that work at town hall would observe the holiday of Christmas and be paid for Thursday.
For Thursday, so they'll get Thursday off.
So Thursday, no, Thursday, town hall is closed, and they're paid on Thursday, is that?
Right, for both those, for 2015 only?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we got a second, you want to jump in on that? I mean, I understand where you're coming from, but, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous motion. Okay, pouring permit fee schedule for alcohol. Current fee for wine malt pouring permit is $1,000. Shall the fee remain the same or be reduced? We tabled this for discussion at our last meeting.
I made the motion to table it. I have been reviewing this, just thinking about discussing this, so on and so forth, and I just don't see the legitimacy of creating a separate licensing line item for a business that is very similar to the other businesses in town. So I'm going to make a motion that the fee stands at the $1,000.
Would you mind seconding it just for the discussion?
Second for discussion.
Okay. So the alternative would be to carve out a special permit?
Carve out a special permit and does a special fee.
Right. And as I remember, we talked about it, if we, if we start doing this, it's just going to.
Set a precedent.
Domino and keep going. I mean, I feel bad for this particular business, though, that's the issue. But do we want to bring it up every single time when there's an issue, or do we want to stay consistent? Comments?
Well, I just think it's a huge jump. I mean, $500 more from one year to the next. I don't think that is appropriate. I don't feel good about that.
And we've heard from you, okay. I'm going to take a vote here, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
I'm going to be in favor of it, so. And you're opposed?
Yes.
Okay, so two to want to pass this, Heather? Okay, direction on how to proceed with police chief applications. Deadline close 12, deadline is 12/17, so we're still a couple of days away from that. Yes.
I've been pretty much acting as the front with this whole process. What I'd like to do is make a motion that the Board instruct me to take the internal candidates, once the date, the due date's here, and submit them to the Retired Police Chiefs Association for their review and guidance relative to that.
And have them come back with a recommendation and a review of them to the Board?
Yeah.
So that's a motion. You want to second it for conversation?
Yes, second for discussion, because I believe we've already agreed to do that.
I know.
We have done it here, and we talked about it.
We, we have, Jackie. I'm just trying to take this step by step so everybody in town sort of understands what we're doing, instead of you have to go back last month to see what we're doing today. I mean, realistically, once the closing date comes forward, we take the packets, we give it to the association, they do a review, they give us their feedback on that. I have a second motion, but I want to get through this first. And I'm just trying to reassure everybody in town that this is very open, that we're trying to make sure that we do everything correctly, and that there is a, a connection of expertise reviewing this with us.
And what they give us back is just going to be their opinion on each of the internal candidates, however many there are, but they're not, well, let me ask a question. Are you looking at them to rank them in their opinion, or just give the pros and cons as they see it for each applicant?
I think the pros and cons, because my next motion is going to be establishing a screening committee.
Okay.
Right, for, but they're going to charge for this advice, right?
Because we're doing minimal, yes, they're going to charge, but I don't think it's going to be the high end of what we're, we discussed.
Right, because it was $1,000, wasn't it?
They were, they originally went up to about $3,000 based on, yeah. I don't think we're going to be anywhere near that.
Yeah.
But the point is, is to get them to do the review, get back and with us.
I mean, from my point of view, I'd rather spend the money and get a professional review of it than skimp on a few dollars and not.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's three zero.
Now, my second motion.
Yeah, in relation to the police chief?
In relationship to the police chief's position, is that we establish a screening committee. That screening committee will consist of myself, one other Board of Selectmen member, and the town administrator. This way here, we can have these interviews behind closed doors. And the reasoning is, we are going to be talking to individuals about the safety and protection of the community. These types of discussions can lead to information getting out in the public that we don't really want to see floating out there. So I think it needs to be a closed-door interview in that regard. And then that committee would report to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen will take their vote based on what that committee recommends.
Okay. No, I'd be interested in being on that, I don't know if you have.
Well, when do you, do you think this will happen? Because I'm going to be away in January.
I'm trying, I'm hoping, I'm pleading, that before Christmas, after Christmas but before New Years, that week, that would be what I'd like to see, so that when we get into January, we have a recommendation for the selectmen, and we could start a new chief off and move forward.
So did you say maybe two select board members?
Two select board members.
Two, you can't have three because of the quorum.
Right.
That's right, yeah.
That's, that's the problem. We're trying to keep this behind closed doors. I want, I mean, it doesn't have to be myself, but seeing I've been sort of moving this forward through the whole process, I can give you sort of an update. And given that my past career involved me with the police all the time, I sort of have a feel as to what their responsibilities are. And, and I'm trying to do this so that the Board can give some feedback during the screening process. And I, I think the town administrator needs to be involved, because she's going to be working with this individual down the road, which goes back to that statement.
But the Board will have the ultimate say.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
You'll just bring information to us and then make a decision.
Right.
And will that be in executive session?
No.
No, that'd be an open.
No, that will be open.
Because it should be open.
Absolutely. What will happen is, is the screening committee will, will give a report, do some scorings relative to the individuals, based on what we see, the screening committee recommends X or Y, and then it's up to the Board to decide if that's where they want to go. If the Board does not agree with this, the Board can throw this back and open up another screening committee and do whatever.
And the Board, if they say candidate one, candidate two, and the Board decides it should be flipped, we could do that too. It's up to the majority of the Board when it comes up for a vote.
So do you need a second?
Yeah, I've made the motion.
Second.
Okay, that was our discussion. Now, one, one question is, between Christmas and New Years is a tight time.
I know.
As far as busy and all that.
That's why I'm saying it may not happen.
For the week after, I mean, the first week of January.
When are you going to be gone?
The sixth, yeah, but I can't be on, yeah, but you're talking about after.
I want you to be here for the vote.
Yes.
Oh, um, gone.
You're going for a long period?
Twelve days.
Twelve days?
Yeah.
We'll just schedule it while everybody's here.
Well, that's what I want to do. I, I don't want this Board not to have full.
And we'll check when Shannon's coming back, so we make sure we've got, if possible, five people. Yes, ma'am?
It looks like on that first motion that Charlie made and Jackie second pertaining to instructing Charlie to take internal candidate apps to Chief Association review and recommend review each internal candidate's pros and cons, we don't have a vote.
We did, three zero.
It was three to zero?
Yes. You were, you were out of the room there for a minute.
Sorry.
No problem. I got you covered.
So this motion's on the table, but you guys haven't voted.
Yes, okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So we'll do that.
I will promise you that my intention is to, and I'm only one member to this Board, but my intention is to have a full Board to do the vote.
I can't do it from, from fall, from my, if I had to?
You can't vote, no, no. I mean, I, I think it's important enough, even if we have to go the third week when you come back, whenever it is, we just wait.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, okay. You agree?
I, I want to make it so that everyone's here.
Okay. Okay, next, second shift fire ambulance staffing funding. There's, okay, there's been a great deal going on in the news with the second shift ambulance staffing at the fire station. And at least in my opinion, and the fire chief's here, he can talk, excuse me. It's kind of a repetition of what we talked about at the meeting when, when the chief was here about needing the funding, and the town approved it two and a half years ago, and there wasn't any funding in place, so we need to get it in place before next October in order to meet the agreement that, with the state. Okay, so does the Board wish to address this issue at the time? Do we wish to try again with a prop two and a half for the funding at the special town meeting, or? I, let's, I guess the question I went throughout there, do we all agree that we need the funding for the second shift?
Oh, I totally, totally agree we need the funding.
So we're, we're all on the same page, so now we've got to figure out how to get that funding. I mean, we can put it into the budget for next fiscal year and run it through the budget process, we can go to special town meeting.
I would like, because we can do it at special town meeting, I would like to see it go in front of special town meeting and then go for the vote during the annual town election. In the meantime, we could also be pushing the budget to have it as a safety net, if possible. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I guess my, my question is, this whole process is going to take four or five months or so, or more, so is there something we can do? And do we want to get funding in place, you know, for the last half of fiscal '16? Because right now, we're limping along without the funding.
I would bring the chief to the podium, but my understanding is that he's been modifying his working budget.
Right, to try to supplement as much as possible, but go ahead.
Yeah, I've taken the budget that we have remaining.
We have to announce who you are.
Chief Workman, Fire Chief. I've taken the monies that are available in our budget through a bit of savings that was recognized for our downgrade to BLS, and offered some stipends and some incentives that I believe are going to satisfy the state, but it's only good through my budget through June. So it's a temporary solution.
So I guess the question is, so do you think if we can get funding in place for fiscal '17, July 1st, that is what you need, and you can, whatever you're doing now, make changes, you'll be okay?
I believe that will, yeah, that will work.
That, that should probably take the pressure off the process.
Yep.
Then I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen submit for the special town meeting, an article which is in Prop two and a half, not an override, what's it called, an extension?
It would have to be an override.
Right.
Yeah.
For the funding of the second shift for the ambulance.
So you want the select board to submit, or you want the fire chief to submit?
Well, the, the Fire Chief theoretically submits it to us.
Right.
And we endorse the articles.
Exactly, that's what I personally would like to see, him give it to us so we can endorse it, and kind of stamp it, stamp it along the way.
Just to remind folks, it's the select board's warrant.
Right.
So, I mean, the Fire Chief or anyone else can submit something, but it's not an article until the Board of Selectmen say it's an article.
Till we approve it.
Unless it comes from petition from the floor, other way in.
I just think it's good if the department head can come to the Board. It adds support to it. I mean, we all know the chief's.
So we can make sure we add Fire Chief's name to the article at the corner, but he doesn't have to worry about writing it. I'll put it together, I'll check with you on numbers.
Sure, that sounds fine.
And we all want to be together on this and make sure when we present it.
I appreciate that, absolutely.
Not a problem.
So I'll second.
Well, I, I made a motion basically, but the motion was to basically establish it at town, at the special town meeting. You're asking that he submit the article, and we go to another selectmen's meeting to take the formal vote to put it on as an article.
Well, we have to do that anyways, go to a meeting and approve the, the articles.
Oh, I understand it. I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that, I withdraw my motion.
Okay. So you want to recraft it?
There's nothing to recraft, you've just instructed the chief to submit it.
So you'll, you'll submit it to us, and when we get it, we'll, we'll look at it to approve it?
That sounds, that sounds fine, sure.
Now, is that number still a good number, 135?
Yes.
Yeah. And, and when you submit it, if you could, can you kind of give us some more detail? Because I think it's going to be important when we hand it out physically to the folks that can see it.
What that pays for, absolutely, yeah. Because it's, it takes an average wage, which hasn't changed, we've been level funded, so the wages haven't changed. Takes an average year, and basically breaks it down for that coverage with that, using that average wage.
I think the last time we, we threw the 135 out there, and some people went, my gosh, but if we break it down, it shows what they get for that money.
Yeah.
And importantly, and I don't think we were, we did a good job, we being all of us, on how little that's going to cost each taxpayer.
Yeah, yeah, because it is, I think it's 25 cents per thousand is the number that I believe was, that it come out with it. And it's, it's all part-time, and we're not paying vacation, overtime, sick time with any of that, so it really is bear bones.
But I think if the people know, and I don't know if we can quickly figure out 25 cents a thousand for, you know, 30, 40, 50 dollars a year, I mean, that's nothing, that's.
I, I think it's a good value, I think it's, it's needed in the town.
Yeah.
And I certainly like to see it go forward, so.
So I think as much information as we can give them, the better it is.
I agree, 100%.
And maybe we can hold some kind of open houses or some, something to really.
Sure, yep.
Push it out there.
Absolutely. We should be doing more open houses, more in the spring, so.
Yeah, whatever we need, okay.
Yep.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, discussion on considering conversations with surrounding communities to assist with the second and third shift ambulance coverage. Okay, Charlie, you put that on the agenda, but, so I guess, probably bring the Fire Chief back up. Now, the second shift, right now, according to the plan that you just laid out, should be covered. Now, what about the, the third shift?
What, what happens with, with the plan, the, just, excuse me, I just want a clarification. Do you mean what I, what we've proposed as remediation with the state for, to finish out this fiscal year?
What, what this question means is, do we want to go and have formal conversations with, say, East Hampton and Westfield to give us formal coverage rather than as needed as we're doing now?
But that's, yeah, I mean, you just have to weigh what type of service that you're looking for. I mean, from when I got hired, it was, what I had believed I'd heard from the town was that you wanted the quickest possible service, which is, is, is people from in-house at the station here in town to respond. Anytime that you are responding from home or responding from a different town, there's a delay.
Right.
So I guess my recommendation would be to really, you know, it's reasonable cost, it's all part-time labor, I would really try and keep it in-house in Southampton.
And you feel your plan will give us that coverage in-house?
Yeah, the 135.
Three shifts?
The 135.
Right, but I mean, we're just talking about now, between the next six months.
The, the interim plan, basically, it, I have talked to the chiefs in the surrounding, there's always a mutual aid agreement, which is part of every community, and they have no problem with the coverage that they have been providing or any coverage that we may need. The plan that I put forth addresses the state's need, because it, it just has more coverage with our guys, even though they're covering from home. So it's not the coverage that you'll get with a second shift. Coverage from out of town is probably slightly faster than us responding from home. But, so what the plan currently does is it just helps give incentives for us to cover it from home more. It doesn't address second shift covering it from the station.
Seth?
Well, there's, it's, the underlying question is, and this has been coming up with on and off all the time, about the fact that there isn't coverage in town.
At the station.
Right, so this opens up the issue of, do we need a formal agreement with surrounding towns? I know we have a mutual aid agreement, I understand all that, but should we go another layer? And the biggest concern about this is if it doesn't get funded at either the special town meeting or the, or the annual town meeting, we're not going to have an ambulance service.
Come October.
Yeah, and people need to understand that.
Well, that's what I mean, we've got to get the detail and the.
Yeah, I mean, what we've submitted to the state so far, with what we've got for coverage in place to the end of this fiscal year, is adequate with the state. I would suggest that we see how some of the town meeting goes. I mean, if we get, you know, a vote for a two and a half override, and it just then needs to go to a vote, I feel like we're heading in the right direction. I think to, to look outside community, you know, is a possibility, it's a hail mary, I mean, you know, it's, it's available if we need to go that direction.
Don't misunderstand me, I don't like this at all.
Yep.
You know, this is not like I'm encouraging this.
Yeah.
But people need to realize that if it doesn't get funded, that's where we're heading.
Yes, I think that's an important point. I've had conversations with the chief, I think, surrounding towns, surrounding chiefs. I think they're amicable to working with us. If it was a long-term type arrangement, there'd need to be further discussion. I don't think we need to enter into an agreement now. I think what we have is mutual aid agreements currently in place, and with the discussions that I've had, I think we're in good standing for, right now.
And you're keeping constant communication over.
Absolutely, oh, yeah.
I'm assuming, again, you're going to go back after we're talking about what we want to do, relay that to them, so they'll get a sense that hopefully this will be ending in a short period.
Yeah, I've already had direct conversations in regards to it, with all surrounding departments, so.
I'm satisfied for that, I just wanted to bring this up in conversation more and take action to it.
Very good idea.
I'm rest assured John has it under control.
Okay, thank you.
John might as well stay up here.
Oh, yes, yes. Unless you've got a pitch hitter coming in.
No, 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 no.
Process P C Fs for emergencies. So, last of our monthly reports is, okay, last of our monthly reports is from the MPI. That doesn't go in here. We currently have an emergency PCF process where a PCF can be completed and submitted simultaneously with a regular PCF. The emergency PCF allows the paper trail and the immediate assignment of the position. The emergency PCF and the regular PCF travel through the process together. Meanwhile, the emergency PCF is essentially rubber stamped and valid for two weeks. So we have conversations on an emergency process when you need staffing. You can't wait for the multiple weeks, so. We have a process in place. I guess the only question is, it needs to be submitted right when you hire somebody, the emergency and a regular PCF. That has to be signed by the new employee and yourself.
And just if I may, the process has changed a bit. When I first came on, there weren't, the PPPB board has just changed some of where they need signatures. It wasn't until the last group of PCFs had gone through that they had put in a fund from this time only. Before that, I could backdate things as needed just to make sure that I had personnel in place and then backdate if they worked a day or two here or there, that I could backdate it to accommodate for that. Some of the challenges that we have is in moving forward. So now that they've added this date where when you sign it, that's the date that's good. The challenge to that to me is not in getting the paperwork through the whole process, but the fact that it doesn't actually get enacted until that date. So I need flexibility with that date for a number of different reasons. Probably, you know, some of the most obvious is we're 35, you know, part-time members. That it's a second job at the least if it's not a third or a fourth job for them. I have, you know, members of, you know, they're in the military, merchant Marines out on a ship. You know, they're not, they don't have the ability to come in in a two-week timeframe to sign a piece of paper to get it to you. Although when they come back and cover a shift and it's an emergency response that they go to, their trained personnel, there's no reason that they shouldn't be able to respond to that person with a heart attack right away. And we get the paperwork done and if we have to backdate to cover their costs, you know, for however long it takes, I mean, within a reasonable amount of time. I certainly want to work with the system. I guess the only thing that I'm asking for is the flexibility in backdating as necessary to accommodate everyone's schedule.
Tell me if I'm wrong on this, but the emergency PCF.
What is an emergency PCF? I mean, honestly, it's like, is that just a PCF that I say this is an emergency?
So this is, this is as I explained it before, this is the same thing. What the emergency PCF does is it allows you to continue on with the regular course of business until you can catch up with the paperwork. You submit the emergency PCF and a regular PCF simultaneously. The emergency PCF becomes effective the moment you sign it. It passes through at the same time the regular PCF does. Why do you do it that way? Number one, you have emergency EMTs and paramedics. You need to put them on right away. Understood, continuity of business is required. You have them sign the two pieces of paper or one sheet of paper at the same time. They're already done. You can have, you can even have these forms available for them when they come in to interview and meet with you and you either put them through or you don't. The emergency PCF gives us a paper trail, so now we don't have any liability issues if the person gets hurt, injured, whatever. They're an official employee of the town. The emergency PCF, again, goes through immediately. The regular PCF is going to now have two weeks from that emergency date sign to get signed by the Triple PB, the FINCOM and the Board of Selectmen. That two weeks, yes, that has an effective date, which is the day after the Board of Selectmen signs it. However, with, when doing both things at the same time and making sure you submit them to the Triple PB and let them know if they need, if need be, they can put up an emergency meeting. Right now, the process is working that the Thursday before the Board of Selectmen and the FINCOM meet, Triple PB meets. So every two weeks, this process is rolling. So there's, there's no reason it shouldn't be. We shouldn't be backdating things. I don't think it's a good precedent to set. I think the emergency PCF allows the need to get the person in the ambulance first thing. They come in today, they interview, you sign both forms of paper. They're starting tomorrow, the emergency PCF assigned, the regular PCF assigned. And in two weeks, we're good to roll as a permanent employee and we're doing the paperwork with Donna.
It covers the town and the employee, but I guess the question was, is the emergency PCF a special PCF? Or are you just doing a duplicate and putting emergency on it?
It's the same exact PCF form. There's just a box that says emergency. According to the Triple PB's definition, it means when, in order to continue the ordinary course of business. And I don't believe there's any objections to, you know, you need someone to start tomorrow. We need the paperwork. This is how you do it.
Is that similar to what the Highway Department uses?
It's the exact, the form's the exact same. It's just a matter of checking which box at the top, emergency or regular.
So that would take care of the fact that you...
It all, it all could work from this point forward. I think the problem is really in the fact that there's been a change where it wasn't necessary to have, the date of when they started and backdating was never an issue until recently. So now I've got some stuff that, you know, and she says emergency PCF and adding more paperwork and another layer of stuff on top. And my concern is, now you're adding more paperwork on top of the process. I can certainly work with that. It's not as just easy as sitting down with somebody and interviewing. I mean, really, you know, when we start them off, it, you know, you might have a verbal interview. You know, a PCF, I can't draw a PCF until I determine a wage. I can't determine a wage until I can determine their experience, what they're, you know, they're up on all their medical affiliations. Certifications need to be delivered to me before I can determine with the PCF. So if I have them sign a blank PCF, then I have to hand fill out a PCF. I mean, it all sounds good when it just rattles off. But honestly, the functioning, the day-to-day is a challenge. I mean, I can, you know, I can move forward to get things in a more timely manner, but to all of a sudden write things and say, "Okay, we're not going to backdate." What you're saying is these guys that have stood up and are getting, okay, at three o'clock in the morning to go out on a call, now all of a sudden you're not going to pay them?
No, I think the process, I mean, you said you've got to get the qualifications and all this stuff. So you can't hire the person until you have all those.
Well, I can, I can start a person in just, I mean, if I get their, their medical qualifications. I mean, I can start a lot of that paperwork moving forward in some circumstances for a brand-new hire. If I've got like the, where the remediation goes with the state, where I have, I have in front of me 35 PCFs that I've done for every person. The chances of me getting, I mean, I just completed that today after the remediation, all the PCFs. The chances of me getting 35 part-time guys who work second and third jobs to come in and sign this, it's not like they're just sitting in my office.
We're talking about new going forward, though.
Okay, but new people going forward, that's not a problem. I can do that going forward. I can't go back. And I'm going to advocate for my guys here. I'm, if they came out at three in the morning, if they did shifts so that they could do emergency coverage, I'd say, "We need to pay them."
Are you saying you don't have PCFs for 35 guys?
I have PCFs for every one of them. I have all the changes. But the fact that they've got written and said they were only going to be from the date that they were approved by the Select Board, you know, if you had given me that ahead of time, I could have worked towards that. All of a sudden, I get these PCFs back that say, "Oh, we're only going to go forward from the date they were signed." And yet I've got guys that have worked three o'clock in the morning coming out on emergency call.
I mean, that's a process that's been in effect for a little while with the date signed, so I mean, I guess...
It hasn't been written on there. It hasn't been anything that I've identified. If it's, if it's my fault there, then it's my fault. But what I'm saying is, it's an honest mistake. I think that what I'm trying to do is provide emergency service. I guess I'm just looking for the flexibility for everything. I mean, I've got 35 in front of me that need to be done, emergency, that are not new hires and don't fit into our category.
But you don't have 35 in front of you, so you've got PCFs all done.
PCFs, 35 that I completed today.
And these are all new people?
These are, no, these are all the remediation, PCFs for remediation.
So for what, we haven't paid them?
Well, they've already started with that remediation plan, which had to be in within 10 days. So they're all started into that process. But now I need to finish the paperwork process with the Select Board and PPPB.
Can we finish this paperwork process as a special project? Get it done with and from today forward, you've got to follow...
All I'm looking to do is just to, is to have everything that has come up to this point, just, you know, the flexibility of paying the guys if they work.
We need to pay them for what they worked, absolutely.
And then certainly going forward, if we want to have an emergency thing and add another layer of paperwork, I'll do my best to do that and we'll have to see how that works. If there's problems with that, I can certainly, you know, address liaison and...
There hasn't been a problem with the highway, so.
So an answer to that question, first of all, what I would do is I'd take those forms. I'd photocopy them. I would say mark the original ones as emergencies. The second one is regular PCF, so we're already covered. That way, any of the work the guys have already done, we're good to roll. Notify the Triple PB immediately, see if they can do a special meeting so that they can get these approved. I don't know when these folks started, so it's probably already had a little time lapse, which is probably not the best thing, but we can do it. As far as moving forward, the, the emergency PCF is not extra work. You're doing the exact same PCF. You're making a photocopy and you're checking the box. There's no reason, absolutely no reason, when someone comes in to interview, they can't put their name, their address, their phone number, the title they're applying for on the piece of paper. Yes, they, yes, the piece with the money.
I cannot write what their wage is when they first come in the door.
But you don't need to, John.
You just do that before you submit it, that's all.
Okay, okay. It would be good if, if, if you want to sit down and look at everything we've got. I mean, there's no shady business going on here. Everything is above boards. All I'm looking for is the flexibility to catch up from where we were in the past. If we need to set a process for going into the future, that would be helpful. Not just, you know, I mean, there should be a written process of what you want to see here. I have no problem, but to just hear it coming off from the side, I mean, really, let's write it down. Let's make it so that, so that we all know what page we're on. Let's make it so that as we move forward, you know, we're doing it in a timely manner. And if there's a problem with a written process, then we can address what that particular problem is. So I can't address and all that she just put out of, you know, I mean, it, it sounds like it could work, but it really, I have to see how the process. And if there's a problem with the process, I need a way to address that problem. Because what I'm concerned about is, is, is paying my guys. I'm concerned about getting people staffing the ambulance and figuring out the paperwork. I'm more than happy to do. Maybe, you know, as liaison, we could sit down with whatever process is drafted up. And that could be something that we, you know, figure out together as we move forward.
I think we're making it too complicated, really.
I think so, too.
I, I think if you sit down with Heather and she could give you some assistance to make the copies, put emergency and get all these folks on there and get them paid. And from today going forward, we just do the simple process to a PCF.
So, yeah, if, if, if all that you just said out in that two minutes there, if you could actually write that down, that would be a helpful thing.
Can I suggest you guys meet and just take care of it? I mean, it seems to me like 15 minutes of copying.
I don't think this is the process that we need to commit to writing. I think it's very simple that all you're doing is you're doing the thing in duplicate. I'm happy to sit with you and do it, John. I don't know if it's necessary to write out the distinction, which is you're doing it in duplicate.
Well, if you want, I have no problem with duplicate. I have no problem with, with moving it forward. I certainly want to, you know, get things through in a timely manner. All I'm saying is that there's, there's a problem with, with, you know, all of a sudden implementation. There's some things that we just need to take care of. And if we could just bring the past ones up to being paid, pay these guys for a couple, whatever it takes to get there, I'd be more than happy to sit with you. It would be appreciated if we could have something that was clear. If all you want to write down is that you need to put everything in in duplicate, that's fine. But what I suggest is that we define what that emergency management is. We define, you know, what it is you want to see in duplicate. And that it is just a process, so if there's a problem with it, we can address what point in the process is the problem. I think that it's a reasonable request. I think we're just looking to pay people for the work that they've done. And we're just looking to catch up to whatever you need.
I think we've already solved that just by the process she's going to help you with. And if you want to have her do an email to you with the new process, that's simple.
Yeah, and I guess the only problem is, what do we do about the, the past things that have already been signed with, you know, because they're signed with this date going forward? Well, I need to pay them for what they've done prior.
That's what we were just talking about.
No, but some of these are, you know, I mean, you know, some of them are, they're a myriad of things. Some of it may be, a guy completes a, you know, a program through the academy. The academy, and this is one that I dealt with today. The academy hasn't produced the completion paperwork or a letter to say that he's completed it, which would, which would give him a raise. He's functioning now as a firefighter, but I need that completion paperwork before I can process anything. If the, if the paperwork comes back from the academy, the Mass Fire Academy, and says that he completed it a month ago, then I want to be able to backdate that paperwork for a month because that's when he completed it. The academy just took a long time to get the paperwork. I think it's a special circumstance. I don't expect it to be every PCF that I get. But I just need someone who's going to work with me that will allow for those special circumstances and address these as individual and people, one at a time as necessary, to make sure that the paperwork gets through in a reasonable way. And then I think that's a reasonable process that, you know, the Personnel Policy Procedure Board has. I think that they have gone out of their way to meet, you know, a couple of times per month. I certainly appreciate that. I think that they're trying to be accommodating. I would like to accommodate their needs. I think that we just need to be up to step with what those needs are. I think that we just need to be up to step with some of the people that have been caught in between here and just make sure that we're treating our people right. And then bring the process up to where it needs to be and move forward from there.
I guess I suggest, I recommend you take, get all the paperwork together of all these past instances. Sit down with Heather, get it all settled. But again, going forward, as of today, the new process. So two weeks from now or a month from now, there's none of this coming up again. It's all settled.
I would hope that. And if there's a problem with the process, I would just hope we address it.
Yeah, it's a simple process. I'm, I don't know that...
I would hope that, then if it's a simple process, then there won't be any problems.
Right, exactly. If there is, we talk about it, but...
If there is, we talk about it. That's all I'm saying also.
Yeah, I don't think we want to change the process again. It's just, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I'm just looking for...
The issue is solving all the back issues.
That's the sole issue, is just solving all the back issues.
I'd say make some time with Heather and she'd help you out.
That sounds good.
Okay, good. And get everybody paid. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Do you want all these PCFs now or?
I think you gotta...
These are the ones that we need to figure out what to do with?
No, these are only part, these are 35 of the immediate, with the remediation with the state that happened. There's 35 of them because it has to be for every, every person that works. So it's just a temporary PCF for the time that my money will allow for the interim incentives until June 30th. So in order to, I had to put it in place right away, so these guys are already working towards that. But the paperwork is just now complete. And so whatever process we need to go through, we'll answer these 35 that I have in front of me. What I've been, what we've been trying to talk about is also what to do with the past ones that have been past dated. We need to go through, my concern is to get guys paid. What I believe I'm hearing from the Select Board is that you're going to work with me to make sure that these guys get paid for their fair compensation and that we'll try and improve the process going forward.
If you want to hand those to me, I'll take a look at them and I'll sit down with the parties I need to sit down with. And then we'll, we'll come up with a plan.
One of the parties is going to be me, so we're going to need to just sit and, and figure out what that looks like. And I would like some time together to do that. And I'd probably want to do it on an individual basis. If you'd prefer, I could go back to all the, the past PCFs, gather them all so that we can kind of consolidate our meeting.
I would say if I could recommend, maybe we can take this offline and you can, we can do this. Because we don't need to have it at the...
Sure, okay.
If you don't mind.
No, no, I don't mind. So we'll set up later.
Thanks. Thank you. We're all set. Okay, next is review bylaw format revisions for special town meeting, but we're going to pass over that tonight. We're not ready to...
Hey, 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 Virginia is here.
Really?
She's ready. She's ready to roll.
I didn't see your name on here.
That's because she was a latecomer to the name ad. I didn't know who was going to appear.
Had I seen your name, I would have never said that, sorry.
I'm glad you said that.
And you have it on film if you need it.
Yeah, Virginia Ahart, 27 Fomer Road. A couple of months ago, Heather put together a small kind of ad hoc committee to work on the bylaws. If you've ever tried to find anything in the bylaws, you'll know it's rather interesting. You can read all of them to find one category that you're looking for. And they're all over the place. So it's, she asked me, Francine Tishman, Margaret Larson.
And Jim Palermo.
And Jim Palermo. And we've kind of been having some fun with this, too. If you want to have some fun, drop in when we're meeting on two o'clock on, up in the, it's usually a Wednesday or so in the week, up in the second floor meeting room. We will be presenting a format to be used to categorize the bylaws at the town meeting, at the special town meeting. Once that's approved, and they'll be in categories, so you can find all the dogs together, all the traffic things together, whatever it is. Now, we're only, we're not working with the zoning bylaws or the planning board bylaws or the personnel bylaws. We're only working with the other bylaws that affect the town. And like I said, we've been having, having some fun. We will then be going over the bylaws and we'll be coming back after that to a town meeting with recommendations of what needs rewrites, what you might want to throw out, and some suggestions of what seemed to be missing. So if we had a little more time, I could throw out a question to all of you, if you want to hear it.
Oh, please do.
Go for it.
If you were to read a bylaw which said that coasting will be illegal in the town.
What would be illegal?
Coasting.
Coasting?
C-O-A-S-T-I-N-G will be illegal in the town, on any town road, across any town road or on the sidewalk. Tell me what you're not allowed to do.
I would, I would say a car being in neutral, but that's probably not it.
We're talking about sledding here.
Yep.
It needs to be so much fun up on Maple Street before they finally built houses.
Is he, is he right? Is sledding?
No. After a great deal of discussion, because we're all from different parts of the country.
I thought it was...
Jim Palermo came up with the lovely thing that's coasting in Buffalo, where he grew up, with all the snow. It's kids grabbing on to the bumper of a car.
Cars.
Snow-packed roads.
Yep.
We don't think that's it. We checked. Janine found us the original. It's, it was an original with about four different parts. Most of them have been rescinded except for that one. Thank heavens the police never got asked to stop this. It, the bylaw was passed in 1948... It, the bylaw was passed in 1948, right after World War II. And it's in with three others that are no longer in effect, of bicycles and motorcycles, and specifies Maple, Center, and Clark Streets. We assume it's the little urchins of the town. Not to sound sexist, but at that time, it would be boys getting on their bicycles on High Street and sailing down across College Highway.
Wow.
That's what we think.
That's what coasting you think is?
That seems to be the best bet. Anyway, we're not too sure that this is not one that we should just rescind. Stay tuned.
Any questions before she leaves? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Virginia.
So we're not ready to make any revisions or suggestions.
On the bylaws? No, this was just an informative meeting.
So you don't, you have any comments?
We just learned about coasting tonight, John.
So, John, just to clarify from Charlie's comment, these aren't revised bylaws. This is a revised format with categories for the bylaws that we would like to submit to special town meeting. That's simply just, you know, the question you're asking the public, are you able to find things currently? Because this allows you to actually be able to find, and it gives us growth, the ability to move forward, add things without having to, the next one we add is 129. This is just, you know, what section does it belong in?
Better indexing and.
Yeah, it's really just ease of read.
By the way, I was hoping you were going to say toasting. That's me. Okay, now we have appointments, Greenway Negotiating Committee.
John, I need to excuse myself, because the Ethics Commission advised me of such relative to the Greenway.
So how this works, Charlie, is this is going to be the rule of necessity? Because this is a matter that you guys are subject to and you have to decide on, your exclusion in this conversation would actually be an inability to vote, because there wouldn't be a.
So you could sit there and not vote?
Well, you can sit there, yeah, and if you have to vote, then you have to vote.
Yeah, you won't have to.
But I think the problem is you're going to have 2 to 0.
2-0-1?
Something like that. I don't know.
If it goes that way.
Well, just make sure it's a matter of record that I made the statement.
Okay.
It is. So Matt Christie, Matt Christie, okay. So there's any, I don't know Matt Christie, but.
So Matt Christie's on the Water Commissioners. He is also on the Conservation Commission?
I take it back. I met him recently, yes.
Yeah, so the reason that Matt Christie's name is on this, and also Doric, which I believe I see right there, is because these two individuals have a lot of knowledge, information, and different eyes to offer to this project. They also took time out of their busy schedules to meet with us when we went up and talked to Mass EOT about the next steps in the Greenway. But before we can move on with planning out what the Greenway is going to look like, what the rail trail is going to look like, we actually have to ascertain the property and be able to make a purchase. And that's where I think they're going to be able to come in and to play and help us out quite a bit with moving this forward.
They came to our last meeting, and it was a good meeting, so. Can I have a motion to accept Matt Christie and Doric Dodds for the Greenway Negotiating Committee?
So moved.
I'll second. Any more conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstayed.
Okay, so 2-0-1, please. And Norris School Committee, Virginia Ahart would like to be on the Norris.
Oh, I could talk about her.
It's probably not going to be as much fun as the other committee, but it's important. So I'd like to have a motion to nominate Virginia Ahart to the Norris School Committee?
I'll second. I'll make the motion first.
Second?
I'll second.
Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So 3-0. Thank you, Virginia. Doric and Matt. Election workers, calendar year 2016.
Now, if you're just listening.
Heather, do we have to nominate the election workers?
You just, you just make a motion to appoint for calendar year 2016.
They have to reappoint it every year?
They, it's a one-year appointment, and sometimes the group fluctuates. They don't use all of these folks at the same time, but it's really important to have these people appointed in case Peter can't come, then Sally can fill in.
Do I have to read all the names?
You have to read all the names.
I'm not going to be pretty on a couple of these. I'm sorry. I apologize. Virginia Ahart, Monica Labree, Eileen Kucha, Ruth Bernier, Florence Collins, Teresa Goral, Barbara O'Reekey, Deborah Pinsky, Ann Gerard, Derude, Alice Brewer, Virginia Huntley, and Christine Canton. Here a motion to nominate all of them to the.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye. I think we should thank them for their hard work.
Aye and aye. It's 3-0. And yes, thank them.
John, do you think we should thank them?
Good.
Oh. I would just like to thank all these wonderful citizens for their hard work every year and their smiling faces, and we really appreciate everything they do. Thank you.
Okay, Personnel, PCFs, Board of Health, Ron Lauren. Do we have those here somewhere, Heather?
Yep, I have a rank up for you, John, and the only one that did not come down from FinCom is Juan Lauren, so I imagine they're not ready on that one.
So since we have none, we'll pass over Ron Lauren. So Highway Department, Heather Latour, Administrative Assistant, resignation within the 90-day probation period. And Josette Picard, Administrative Assistant Position, assuming she's replacing Heather. Is all the paperwork in place?
It is. I haven't gone through each of them to see if FinCom and PPPB have signed off, so you might have to look at those.
PQB, FinCom, okay. PQB and FinCom, okay, they both signed. Can I have a motion for Heather Latour and Josette Picard? Second?
Second.
Conversation and discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So 3-0. Next is the Police Department, Martin J. Cook, promotion to Sergeant.
It's all signed.
All the signatures. So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ian Illingsworth, interim lieutenant to replace Michael Goyet, increase in pay, all signatures.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Police Department, Kevin Nichols, resignation, all signatures. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Aye, I mean, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. 3-0, okay. Fire Department, we have quite a few. Matt Anis, new EMT, all the signatures. I'm going to go over these so we can vote all at once if there's no objection.
Sure.
Okay. Sean Major, new EMT, all the signatures. Jeremy La Rochelle, increase in hourly rate, additional duties. All the signatures, and there's a note it will not add to the budget by the chief. Roger Moore, new EMS coordinator. Signatures. Drew Morris, new paramedic. All the signatures. April Fernandez, new paramedic. All the signatures. Kyle Gagnon, increase hourly rate, completed firefighter 1/2 certification. Going from 15 to 1650, all the signatures. David Muret, decrease hourly rate, reduction in duties, going from 2486 to 2286. Signatures. He's resigning from his position as EMS coordinator. Okay, have a motion to accept all of the above?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So 3-0 again. I'll sign those. Personnel requisition forms, we have none. Annual license renewal. The annual licenses have been submitted for renewal. For alcohol licenses, a state ABCC renewal form was required in addition to the annual fee in a workman's comp certification form. For alcohol licenses serving alcohol on premises, a list of certified bartenders, a completed 304 inspection by the fire slash building, and liquor liability insurance was required. For all other licenses, the fee in workman's comp forms were required. Any licensee that had an outstanding workman's comp form or is listed as owing taxes by the treasurer collector's office or owing water bills will be notified, and their license will be held until payment is made. All liquor licenses have renewed their licenses this year. We still have outstanding car dealers licenses and a handful of common particular. How do you say that?
The.
Okay.
Yeah.
You got the idea.
particular.
Yes. To follow is a list of each licensee and each license.
It's an 1800s law.
Yeah, that they have renewed for 2016. So we need a motion to approve all license renewals. Would you like me to read them off?
So, yeah, sure, go ahead.
She likes you tonight, John.
She swings quickly, doesn't she? Okay, licensee is Black Birch Vineyard for a wine pouring permit. An entertainment license for the outdoor, remove outdoor restriction and change end time to 9:00 PM. Camp John Association, all alcohol club license. It's an entertainment license, kind of particulars license, coin ops and two pool tables. Country Liquor Store, all alcohol package store. Opa Opa, all alcohol general on premise. Entertainment coin op, Paisanos, all alcohol. It's going to make me say.
You're going to have to say it over. Just say the names.
Yeah. Whatever it is. Pizza 99, all alcohol, Pure Foods, wine and malt package store. Smitty's Package Store, all alcohol package. Southampton Beer and Wine, all alcohol package store. Southampton Country Club, all alcohol restaurant. Tin Can Alley, all alcohol restaurant. Westlake Gourmet, all alcohol restaurant. Bichistas, Big Y, Ride A, Stop and Save, and Subway all have that common particulars license. So have a motion to accept all of these? So moved.
Second?
Second for discussion. Could you start back up at Black Birch?
Don't go there. Don't go there.
Just kidding.
There's going to be a strangulation here in a minute.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. 3-0. Okay, Contract, Code Red Revision of Contract. We're going to pass over waiting on revisions.
Yeah.
Okay. We got an executive session, three executive sessions a little later on. Contract Amendment with PVPC for Master Plan Implementation.
I haven't seen anything on that.
Project's still in the work. Need to be a Board of Selectmen to sign off that we continue agreement and funding and existence for this project.
Right, still working on it.
So there's no action needed on it. Yeah, Heather spoke with the East Hampton Savings Bank and reached out to PVPC. This was money given by the town through arrangements of PVPC a few years ago. They'll put together a subordination agreement working with the East Hampton Savings and send it back to the town for the BOS to sign in the upcoming week, so there's no action on that either. No other documents requiring signature. So we have three payroll and bill warrants. Who has those? Can you read those off, please?
I don't know if they're here. All right. All right, you got one warrant for $1,969.13.
Did you read the warrant number?
Warrant number is 1116, yeah, W16 hyphen 24A. We have W1624 for the amount of $94,896.18. And P16 hyphen 25 for $268,194.04.
Okay, you making a motion on that?
I make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So 3-0 on that. We'll have to sign those.
Actually, you have to sign those.
Along with these. So approval of minutes, December 1st, 2015, and December 2nd, 2015, special meeting. Has everybody read those?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
I move that they be approved.
Second?
Second.
As written.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3-0. Okay, Calendar and Announcement, Select Board Meetings, December 29th, January 12th. On January 26th, we have a special town meeting.
May I? I'm thinking of a police chief's appointment.
Okay.
Jackie, when are you going to be back?
I'm leaving on the 6th, and I'm coming back 12 days. So I think it's January, I don't think it's January. Six, the 18th.
The 18th, because the 26th is special town meeting. I don't really want to do that on a special town meeting.
How about having a special meeting just for that?
That's what I'm thinking. If you're coming back on the 18th, then you want to tentatively figure the 19th? Would that be okay?
Sure.
Of January?
Yeah.
Let's take a look. Yep, I can do it. So January 19th, 6:00 PM?
Sure.
Board of Selectmen, only topic would be?
Point minute, police chief.
Okay.
Because if we roll into the special town meeting, we're going to be buried.
Yep, I agree. And this deserves its own session.
Yeah, it will be the 19th that we'll have to report at a screening committee and the vote of the selectmen as to who's going to be appointed police chief.
So is there anybody else out there that's?
You skipped 4A.
Did I? 4A.
Oh, yes, solar power.
Oh, 4A. We skipped it on purpose.
It's a good thing you said something.
Todd's here. Good. Todd, do you want to come up and talk to us? Todd's here as an extension of when he was here. How long ago, Todd?
I don't know, a few months ago, I think.
A few months? About options for buying into a solar project to receive net solar metering credits.
Yes, I sat with, oops. Heather, I think a couple weeks ago, and kind of gave her an update on the net metering credit project in Deerfield, and kind of got an update from her, how maybe the town was looking to potentially do something on the landfill. So we kind of discussed that, that the options either on your own land or taking net metering credits from something outside the community, and the pros and cons of each one of them. So the landfill one, you know, has some issues of timing. Are we going to be able to get that done by the end of 2016 to get the 30% investment tax credit? And so a lot of communities look at that, and Amers has done that also and got into a battle legally, and now we're trying to get another one on a different landfill. So I said probably the easiest way is looking at just net metering credits. So I was actually up at Hampshire Regional Schools about three weeks ago, I think it was, talking to them about kind of the same thing, onsite versus offsite. And I think the resounding answer was offsite probably is going to be the best way in getting on this Deerfield project, which is ready to be constructed. It just needs the net metering credit contracts, and for the biggest savings, the least amount of stress. You certainly could do a landfill project down the road, but you don't have to be the net metering credit off-taker of it. Some other community or private entity could take the credits. You would get the land lease, and you would get the tax agreement, but it wouldn't stall you to get the credits. Where this project, you could get the credits right away and get the savings quicker than you would on a landfill project that may or may not be able to get built or not. It all depends on the DEP and the EPA approving everything. So we just kind of talked about this project. The other off-takers that approved and signed the contract is Gateway Regional, so they're coming on for a million kilowatt hours. coming on for a million kilowatt hours. The town of Deerfield, I think, just signed on for half a million. That the developer handled that, I did not. The city of East Hampton for one and a half million kilowatt hours. And they already have their own landfill solar project, so this is a second project they're taking from me. And then, Amherst Pelham Regional Schools is voting, I think, either tonight or tomorrow night to approve the contract. They've already vetted it, and they're taking one and a half million. So, we have five and a half million kilowatt hours committed to or signed on already. If you come on at half a million, it pretty much has sold off almost 80%. And the two others that are looking now at is Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative, which they could take about 850,000. And if they don't, the town of Long Meadow, who I already sold two and a half million kilowatt hours to, they want more credits. It's just the new town manager has to get up to speed on net meter and credits. And Paul Pestersik, who's the finance director there, is trying to get a meeting with him and I so we can kind of talk about net meter and credits.
Now, is this project up and going? Remind me.
No.
Or does it need to sell out completely?
Yeah, so sell out completely. Good question. It's got to sell out completely before they'll start. If they had 90%, maybe one more off-taker come on, they probably would start. But Plemonera, they've already done a little bit of work up there. They've done some land clearing, but it's minor stuff. But all the permits are done, approved, tax agreement's in place, so it's really just the final off-takers. And then, with this nice weather we're having, if they had it yesterday, they'd probably have an excavator up there tomorrow.
So, from the time they get that 90%, when will the site be active?
I would say probably within 30 days after that. Weather permitting. I mean, if the snow starts flying...
So, they get all the equipment in there and...
Oh, yeah. They'd ship the equipment in, order the equipment, ship the excavators in there.
But don't they have to put a slab and a small generating site in there?
Depending on the amount of inverters, that's the only slab they'll put in. It is considered a brown field, but it's an active sand and gravel pit. So, they can do things differently than if it was an actual landfill where they'd have to construct on top of it without puncturing the cap. Here, it's going to be a little different because it's just classified as a brown field.
And what would it be our cost again per kilowatt hour?
So, you would get a 20% discount. So, whatever the rate is, and right now it's 11.1, so you would save roughly 2.2 cents off of each kilowatt hour, half a million to be saving, you know, $11,000 to $12,000 a year.
And it's a 20-year commitment?
Yep, 20-year contract. Every one of them have signed on.
And if my memory's good, there's a floor of eight cents?
Seven and a half, I got it done.
Seven and a half, so it went down a little since last time?
Yep.
Okay. And if it went below seven and a half, we would stay at that floor?
No. So, the seven and a half floor is the minimum you would pay at seven and a half. If it went below seven and a half, you would actually be paying more for a dollar credit than you would receive. And in the history of Womiko, the lowest it's been is 9.3 cents. That's why I tried to get it down as low as possible from eight to seven and a half.
So, our incentive is to save 20% over what we're paying now?
Correct.
And what we'd have to do is commit for 20 years?
Yep.
Is there any out on that contract somewhere down the road, 510? Okay.
No. I mean, you certainly can. They have recourse of litigation.
All right.
So, anybody can get out of the contract.
We have to commit X amount of kilowatt hours. Doesn't have to be the whole town, but whatever we commit, we need to take.
Right. And you're about 75% of that commitment. So, I don't like to go over that unless your costs are per kilowatt hour higher. Then we can look to take a little bit more than you would normally take in usage to offset the costs. Because the credit comes over in a dollar-for-dollar credit. It doesn't come over in a kilowatt hour usage.
Okay. I'm going to assume when the new safety complex is up and going, our usage hopefully goes down.
Still got the town hall, the old town hall to deal with.
Yeah.
Right, but...
And the fire station. I mean, if you want projections, one of the discussions of the old fire station is using it as a TV studio in 10 years. I'm just working on all these contracts. I'm not going to say this is all going to happen.
Get some income. Okay, so, I don't want to vote on this with just three of us here for sure.
Yeah, and I would think that we should have a written proposal to analyze it and really look at our options before we make a...
That's fine.
Is that something you can do?
Yeah, I can put up a savings analysis, get the contract over, and you could get the exact same one that Gateway and East Hampton, just the numbers will be different.
Have you given us a contract at all yet to review?
I think I did a while back. I can certainly get an updated, newer version and just plug in the numbers. And then, what I'll do is I'll get a photocopy of East Hampton's.
Yep.
And so, you can just make sure that, you know, developer is sending you the exact same contract, and you just plug in Southampton's name and numbers, and it's identical. So, then you don't have to hire a lawyer and vet it. It's everything's exactly the same.
I'm sure we want our lawyer to review it, but...
Yeah, no, but I'm saying to negotiate or...
Or do it from scratch, yeah.
They already did it.